I'm Austin City Council. Viewers can watch the council meeting live on YouTube at boston.gov/city-council-tv. At this time, I ask my colleagues and those in the audience to please silence their cellphones and electronic devices. Thank you. Before we begin, I would like to say, is she in here? I would like to say a very big welcome back to our central staff director, Michelle Goldberg. And welcome to her son Levitt. Come up here, Michelle, just so the people at home can see you. Welcome back, Michelle. We missed you. Congratulations on being a mom. Awesome. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll to ascertain the presence of a quorum?
Counselor Braden.
Oh. Just in time.
Counselor Braden.
Yes.
Counselor Coletta. Counselor Durkin. Counselor Fernandez Anderson. Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Flynn. Counselor Louis Jean.
Here.
Counselor Mejia. Counselor Murphy. Counselor Peppin. Counselor Santana. Counselor Weber. And Counselor Worrell. The quorum is present.
Thank you. I have been informed by the clerk that a quorum is present. It is my pleasure to introduce this week's clergy, Father Joseph Zhang from St. James the Greater Church in Chinatown, invited by Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, would you like to come up to the podium with your guests? Reminder to all, I would ask all my colleagues and guests to rise at the time of invocation, and after the invocation, please remain standing as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. Counselor Flynn, you now have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm honored to have Father Joseph Zhang from St. James the Greater Church in Chinatown to pray with us this afternoon. Father Joseph was born in China and ordained in the priesthood in 2004. He served in Manila in the Philippines and was here in Massachusetts in 2013 in Sturbridge. In 2018, he was assigned to St. James the Greater Church in Boston's Chinatown, which has a large Catholic community. In 2019, the Cardinal appointed him as administrator of St. James Church. Father Joseph is the first priest of Chinese descent appointed as a parish administrator in the archdiocese. He is a great asset and a great member of the community. It is great to have him here and to pray with him. And he's going to pray in Mandarin and in English, and my assistant Vanessa Wu will translate some of that into a small prayer, a very brief prayer, in Cantonese as well. Father Joseph, we're honored to have you.
What is such a wonderful honor to be here with all of you, with all the representatives of the city of Boston where I live and to pray together. Let us take a moment to silent our heart in the midst of the day. And we begin in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Lord, as we gather together, we recognize our differences in beliefs, values, and faith traditions, but we honor our unity here at the meeting today with gratitude. Thank you for giving us the ability to love and to be loved, for helping us recognize those little God moments in the beauty of your creation, and for working on the lives of the people in Boston. Lord, I'm also grateful for choosing all valued city council members and inspiring them to make valuable and excellent decisions for your people in this city. Inspire them to be men and women for and with others all the time. Let us be unified in our fight to be for and with the marginalized, the poor, and the oppressed, as that is what you have called us to do. Thank you for opening our hearts as we listen to the needs of all in this loving city. Lord, bless the work we have done and the unseen work we will do through this council meeting as we strive to make a difference in the world. Fill us with enthusiasm and wonder as we receive these gifts with open minds, generous hearts, and a willing spirit. Heavenly Father, we come to you today asking for your guidance, wisdom, courage, and strength. As we begin this meeting, be with us in our deliberations and help us make wise decisions so that everything we do might begin with your love and be carried out through your grace. In the name of our risen Lord, Jesus Christ, amen. And in Chinese to pray the glory be. See, you have光荣归于父，及子及圣神。起初如何，今日依然，直到永远。Amen.
We will now recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, Father, for that wonderful prayer. 谢谢。Thank you. We are now on to presentations. I'm excited to invite up the Dever School Band invited by Counselor Fitzgerald. Counselor Fitzgerald, would you please come up to the podium with your guests?
Thank you, Madam President. I've long said that the three pillars to any successful society is academics, athletics, and the arts, right? A different kind of triple-A bond rating. And today is an important part of that. Today, I have with me Christopher Schroeder, the executive director of the Boston Music Project, along with Andrew and Alex and the Dever School After School Music Program. The Boston Music Project has been a proud partner of the Boston Public Schools for over 12 years. Each year, they provide 2,100 youth with weekly before-after and in-school music education across 23 school partnerships with a team of 56 talented teaching artists. The Dever After School Program has been growing over the past three years, providing essential after-school care for youth and families. Chris, I'm going to invite up right now, he could say a couple words, and maybe rather some actually unfortunate words, and then we will have the band do a little number for us afterwards. Chris?
Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, everyone. We've been here a couple times now, performing and sharing the work that we do across the city. Six years ago, when I joined the organization, we were at one school, at the Quincy School. We had 150 students. We had 17 teaching artists. And over the last six years, we've been able to address a lot of the needs across the city, and we've expanded the work to now 23 school partnerships and now serving over 2,100 students. Some of the other work that we're doing is we're hiring students over the summer. We have, through the Success Link Program, hiring 15 students. Not to fold papers and learn how to copy and collate and that sort of thing. Their job is to record a music album at the Record Co., to produce live concerts around the city. Downtown Crossing, the Boston Bid, has signed on to sponsor us to bring about Boston's first youth music and arts festival to Downtown Crossing. And we're also doing Make Music Boston, which is a proclamation from the city. Mayor Wu has signed off to allow us to activate in eight neighborhoods, bringing music to all parts of Boston, not just the downtown area, but ensuring that all communities and neighborhoods are represented. So we've continued to work and expand and address these important needs. We've seen impacts in a positive way to academics, the attendance in various schools. The challenge that we're facing right now is there are significant budget cuts, both at the city and the state level. And the unfortunate news is some of these programs will be no longer next year due to some of those budget cuts. And I understand the challenges that we all face as city leaders and state leaders, but I think it's important for the students here and in our communities to know that we are supporting them and we are creating opportunities so that every child in Boston has access to music education and a well-rounded educational experience in our Boston schools. So I'm very excited to welcome the Boston Music Project students at the Dever School, the Chamber Orchestra. You're going to hear students that are all in grades two, three, and four. These are very young people, and we've been, that's all right, yeah, absolutely. And they've been doing an amazing job over the last three years as we've been building this program. So I'm excited for you to hear them and see them, and thank you so much for the opportunity. Thank you so much for the opportunity to play here today. Have a wonderful day.
Hello, my name is Axel. I love the teachers. We're just going to have everybody please sort of, um, you know, each other.
Um, maybe we can have them, are they playing another song?
Yeah.
One more? Okay. I was going to have them do it from the podium so that everyone can hear. But it's okay. What's your name?
We can't hear.
Axel, have we played?
Actually, can we have each one, as you introduce them, come up here and from this podium? You can introduce yourself.
Why don't we have them play the last song and then do the introduction?
Okay, yeah, play the last song, and then you'll come up here and do the introduction. Now, if they can each want to introduce themselves on this mic, you can come here. We'll start with you, Eday. Just say your name and what grade you're in.
Hi, my name is Eday, and I'm fourth grade, and I play the violin.
Hi, my name is Aminata. I'm eight years old, and I play the violin.
Hi, my name is Nicole, and I'm eight years old, and I play the violin.
Hi, my name is Caitlin. I'm nine years old, and I play the violin.
Hey, my name is Carla. I'm eight years old, and I play violin.
Hi, my name is Evelyn. I'm 10 years old, and I play the viola.
Hi, my name is Aina.
You want to turn so that they can see you?
Hi, my name is Aina, and I have seven years, and I play the cello.
Hi, my name is Emma, and I am 11 years old, and I play the cello.
Hi, my name is Nico. I'm 10 years old, and I play the cello.
You all were incredible. Please clap it up for the good people. Awesome. And if I can have all of my colleagues join us for, can we take a photo with all of you?
Yes!
Yes? Awesome. Okay. Hi. Yeah, Eday and Evelyn, right? Awesome. Ms. Ida told me about all of you. Amazing. Can I stand here with you? You guys are amazing. Hi. Nicole is here. Right, everybody? Smile! Yes, big smile. Yeah. Big smile! They did a great job! They were amazing! Eday, Evelyn. Oh, sure, sure. Counselor Fitzgerald. I know their teacher, Ms. Ida. You want, come on, come on.
Yeah, one more, one more.
One more. Okay, can you see your own?
I just heard, I just heard, they're all in class, please. I'm watching this.
Yeah, they are. You want to say hi? You guys did such a great job. Thank you. Yeah, I know, they're great. You can come back here when you're a city councilor yourself. Awesome. Chris, the Boston Music Project, Counselor Fitzgerald, thank you. Thank you to all the students at the Dever. I know that Counselor Fitzgerald stated all of the school is watching. Ms. Ida told me, a good friend of mine, a teacher there, I've had the pleasure of going there, told me that everyone is watching, and Eday, Evelyn, everyone's just so great. So thank you for bringing that joy into our chambers. We really appreciate it.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you. Yes, okay. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance to reflect that Counselor Worrell and Counselor, that Counselor Worrell is now present and with us? Thank you. I also wanted to recognize a group of students from the Lycée Auguste in Grenoble, France, participating in a Boston Latin School Student Exchange Program. Salut, bienvenue ici à Boston. Thank you for being here with us. Merci beaucoup. Merci. We are now on to the First Order of Business, which is the approval of the minutes from the meeting of March 27, 2024. All in favor, say aye. All opposed, say nay. The ayes have it, the minutes of the last meeting are approved. We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please amend the attendance to reflect that Counselor Coletta is now with us and is present? We are now on to communications from her honor, the mayor. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docet Number 0631 and 0632 together?
Docet Number 0631, message in order for your approval. In order to reduce fiscal year '24 appropriation for the Reserve for Collective Bargaining by $4,998,388 to provide funding for the Boston Police Department for the fiscal year '24 increases contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society Superior Officers Unit. And Docet Number 0632, message in order for a supplemental appropriation for the Boston Police Department for fiscal year '24 in the amount of $4,998,838 to cover the fiscal year '24 costs contained within the collective bargaining agreements between the City of Boston and the Boston Police Detectives Benevolent Society Superior Officers Unit. The terms of the contracts are July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2023, and July 1, 2023 through June 30, 2025. The major provisions of the contracts include base wage increases of 2%, 1.5%, 2%, 1%, and 2.5% to be given in July of each fiscal year of the contract term, as well as the addition of the Transitional Career Award Program in July 2023. The contract also contains reforms relating to discipline, officer return to duty, pay detail system, and union release, filed in the office of the city clerk on April 1, 2024.
Thank you. Docets Number 0631 and Number 0632 will be referred to the Committee on Ways and Means. I want to also say again thank you to the additional guests who are here, who are part of the Lycée Auguste Exchange Program. Thank you for being here and the Via Boston Latin School Student Exchange Program. Thank you, bienvenue ici à Boston. Hope you are enjoying it. And so another special guest, we have Ms. Ida, who is here with us. So hi, Ida. Thank you for being here with us. I was just reminded that, yes, I want to shout out. She's the best in our office. Okay, we are, thank you, Mr. Clerk. Would you please read Docet Number 0633?
Docet Number 0633, message in order for your approval in order authorizing the City of Boston, acting through its mayor's office of housing, to accept and expend payments in the amount of $40 million given to given to the City of Boston's Inclusionary Development Policy Fund. The City of Boston's Inclusionary Development Fund was established by executive order in February 2000 to support the production and preservation of affordable housing and new market rate housing developments.
Thank you. Docket number 0633 will be referred to the Committee on Housing and Community Development. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets numbers 0634 and 0635 together?
Document number 0634, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $346,835 in the form of a grant for the federal fiscal year 24 Senior Companion Program awarded by AmeriCorps to be administered by the HSTRON Commission. The grant will fund administration of the Senior Companion Program, including reimbursement for travel and meals, plus stipend for volunteers who provide companionship to homebound and frail seniors. Document number 0635, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $140,253 in the form of a grant for the fiscal year 24 Retired Senior Volunteer Program awarded by the Corporation for National and Community Service to be administered by the HSTRON Commission. The grant will fund administration for senior community service volunteers, including reimbursement for meals and travel expenses.
Thank you. Docuets numbers 0634 and 0635 will be referred to the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets numbers 0636 and 0637?
Document number 0636, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Paul Raiber Umfenor II as an alternate member of the Four Point Channel Landmark District Commission for a term expiring March 19, 2027. And document number 0637, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Hassan Karuki as a member of the Building Emissions Reduction and Disclosure Review Board, also known as BIRDLE, for a term expiring March 19, 2027.
Thank you. Docuets number 06, oh, the chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Sorry, this is for 0638.
Okay. Not for 0636 or 0637. Okay. Thank you. Docuets numbers 0636 and 0637 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets numbers 0638 and 0639?
Document number 0638, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Anne Kilgus as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring April 1, 2026. And document number 0639, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sanam Kumehia as a member of the Boston Landmarks Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin, the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation.
Thank you so much. We went, for 0638 and 0639, we went through at last meeting the marathon of appointments. These two individuals are highly qualified and they both appeared before the committee. Anne Kilgus is, this is a reappointment to the Bay Village Historic District Commission. She's incredibly qualified and appeared before the Planning, Development, and Transportation Committee. And then Sanam Kumehia is incredibly qualified, a first-generation American, has lived in Boston his entire life, lives in Dorchester, has an incredible amount of experience in the real estate community. And he's appointed both to the Boston Landmarks Commission and to the Bay Village Historic District Commission. He needs to be appointed to the Boston Landmarks Commission before I pull from the green sheets his Bay Village appointment. So I would move my colleagues like I asked for last meeting. If we can suspend and pass these two appointments, who both appeared before the committee, and then when we get to green sheets, I will pull the other appointment for Sanam. These were just done in the wrong order. And so I apologize to my colleagues and hope that we'll suspend and pass these both today. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation seeks suspension and passage of Docuets numbers 0638 and 0639. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The ayes have it, these Docuets have passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets numbers 0640 and 0641?
Document number 0640, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Angela Ward Hyatt as a member of the Highland Park Architectural Conservation District Commission for a term expiring June 30, 2025. And document number 0641, message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Samaya Turner as a member of the Zoning Board of Appeal for a term expiring May 1, 2026.
Thank you. Docuets numbers 0640 and 0641 will be referred to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0642?
Document number 0642, message in order for your approval, a home rule petition to the General Court entitled "Petition for a Special Law: An Act Relative to Property Tax Classification in the City of Boston", filed in the office of the city clerk on April 1, 2024.
Thank you. Docket number 0642 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. We are now on to reports of public officers and others. Mr. Clerk, would you please read Docuets numbers 0643 and 0644?
Document number 0643, notice received from the mayor of the appointment of Michael Woodall as Chair of the Boston Water and Sewer Commission for a term expiring January 3, 2028. And document number 0644, notice received from the mayor, the appointment of Scott Finn as Comptroller-City Auditor effective April 1, 2024.
Thank you. Docuets numbers 0643 and 0644 will be placed on file. We are now on to reports of committees. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0381?
Document number 0381, the Committee on Education, to which was referred on February 28, 2024. Document number 0381, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $500,000 in the form of a grant for the Open Data Curriculum awarded by the Mass Department of Education to be administered by the Department of Innovation and Technology. submits a report recommending that the order ought to pass.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Education, Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Education held a public hearing on docket number 0381 on Friday, March 29, 2024. The committee received letters of absence from Counselors Fernandez-Anderson and Breeden, with Counselor Breeden also expressing support of the proposed curriculum program. The committee heard from representatives from the administration, Santiago Garses, Chief Information Officer for the City of Boston, and Kerry Jordan, Chief of Staff of the Department of Innovation and Technology, often called DO-IT, as my colleagues know. Chief Garses discussed the city's current open data portal, Analyze Boston, which provides the, which provides the public with numerous data sets that are collected from various city departments. DO-IT and Boston Public Schools are exploring the possibility of incorporating an open data curriculum with current required civic and mathematics courses by utilizing this readily available data. These classes will be targeted towards high school students with the potential to expand this program to younger students in the future. These funds will be used to assist DO-IT and BPS teachers in designing a curriculum using Analyze Boston. DO-IT is also working with an organization, Data Science for Everyone, which introduces data science in elementary to high school classrooms to help shape the open data curriculum. This grant will also assist in funding a project manager to implement this program. The administration also shared that the curriculum itself will also be open source for use by any schools and educators. They're open to, they're open to gathering feedback and expect that different educators beyond BPS will adapt and experiment with the curriculum that DO-IT publishes. Chief Garses discussed the importance of youth, youth learning data science as a way to enter the field of data analytics and computer science. He also highlighted the under, underrepresentation of people of color and women in these fields, which typically leads to high-income jobs. The committee also discussed tracking students' career trajectories and creating more pathways to data science and computer science, higher education, other partnerships between DO-IT and BPS, and the possibility of providing professional development opportunities for BPS teachers. And I'll just add that I'm personally very excited about the new program that this grant would fund. In addition to teaching practical skills for a variety of careers, I think it's a great way to encourage civic engagement by our students. My own civic engagement journey has sparked while I was in school and led me to where I am today. So I'm excited by the opportunity to ignite that for students now. Using real-world data will provide students with the opportunity to learn about Boston and investigate community issues, which is a great way to get more involved. As the Chair of the Committee on Education, I recommend moving the listed docket from the committee to the full council for discussion and formal action. At that time, my recommendation to the full council will be that this matter ought to be passed. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, the Chair of the Committee on Education seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0381. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0381 has passed. We are now on to matters recently heard for possible action. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0509.
Document number 0509, order for a hearing to review programming available for seniors in the City of Boston.
The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Strong Women, Families, and Communities, Counselor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you. I'm just rising to say we had a great hearing and the conversation will continue because we all agree that we need to ensure that our seniors have a wide range of programming available to them across the city. So this will stay in committee, but I do think the lead sponsors would like to say more. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Weber. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair, Senator Murphy. It was, it was a great hearing on Monday. I'd like to thank both Chair Murphy and my 11 colleagues for attending the hearing on Monday, which I sponsored with Counselors Peppin and Madam President Louie Jen. I also want to thank the HSTRON Commissioner Emily Shea, Chief Masso, the Director of Events and Programs Tahisha Jones Horner, and the Program Manager Allison Freeman for attending the hearing in person, as well as Ray Santos from Ethos and Barbara, Barbara Critchlow for attending virtually. We held the hearing to determine the status of senior programming across the City of Boston and to determine what impact the state budget 9C cuts to programming will have on our seniors. While the city is operating two standalone senior centers in Brighton and East Boston, as Commissioner Shea testified, the need is much greater. In fact, a pop-up senior center at the Elks Lodge in West Roxbury run by Ethos has served more seniors than expected and provided senior programming to folks from all across the city. The folks attending the Ethos program and the senior program run by Ms. Critchlow on Mildred Avenue in Matapan demonstrates that our seniors need more programming, all the way from chair yoga to help with funeral and estate planning. I know the city is doing all it can to address the needs of our seniors, but the hearing demonstrated the need for us to continue to push to ensure that we are providing the kind of programming that will allow our seniors to age in place, stay part of the communities they helped build, and to allow them to be active members of our city. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you, Counsel Weber, and thank you, as a co-sponsor, I want to say thank you for your leadership. Thank you, Counsel Weber, and thank you for leading on this issue. I know it matters to your residents in West Roxbury, but I, and, and chair yoga is amazing. And I think all of our colleagues showed up because of how important it is, making sure that we take care of our seniors. So thank you for allowing me to co-sponsor, thank you for your leadership on this issue, not only for your district, but as we talk about this for our entire city. The chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I attended this hearing just in interest in collecting information to gather for the resolution that I filed, similar, but specific to District 7. From the hearing, I learned that there is a study going on. I know that Counselor Lara and myself worked on making amendments to create the study. Very thankful to Emily Shea, our commissioner, to now executing it. So looking forward to the study, just to properly return to the chamber and asking my colleagues for support if there is, in fact, I can prove the need through the study. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Fernandez Anderson. The chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the sponsors of this important hearing. I also listened closely and want to thank the sponsors for highlighting the critical services that seniors rely on in Boston, whether it's food access, transportation, public health-related issues as well. I also want to ensure that my district, especially seniors from Chinatown, also have equal access to these services as well in potentially having a center for seniors. We don't have one in this neighborhood, and it's a neighborhood predominantly of immigrants. And language and communication access would be part of that proposal. So I hope, I can work with my colleagues and the city administration to ensure that the residents of Chinatown also benefit from this potential study. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Docket number 0509 will remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0136?
Document number 0136, message in order authorizing the City of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $700,000 in the form of a grant for the Commercial Acquisition Assistance Program awarded by the BAR Foundation to be administered by the mayor's Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. The grant will fund core support to its Office of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion to grow its impact.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur, Counselor Orrell. Counselor Orrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur held a public hearing on docket number 0136 on Monday, April 1. The committee heard from representatives from the administration, included Shigun Idewu, Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion, and Donald Wright, Deputy Chief of Economic Opportunity and Inclusion. I was joined by my colleagues, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Weber, Counsel Mahia, and Counsel Durkin. I also received a letter of absence from Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Chief Idewu presented the Commercial Acquisition Assistance Program, also known as CAP, a forgivable loan initiative aiding small business owners in acquiring commercial properties. CAP aims to mitigate risk for lenders, facilitating, facilitating access to traditional bank financing, and enable businesses to build a capital stack for property acquisition. The program targets Boston businesses combating gentrification by ensuring affordable spaces and fostering wealth generation through ownership. Deputy Chief Wright detailed how this $700,000 grant from the BAR Foundation will be used to help study and build CAP, which will hopefully be a multimillion-dollar fund, offering forgivable 15-year loans of up to $250,000 to eligible businesses. CAP will allocate this grant as follows: $400,000 for staffing, including a program director for application oversight and community outreach, $100,000 for legal and technical assistance, and $200,000 for business study and forming program implementation economic equity goals. CAP recipients must submit annual impact reports and maintain affordable rents for 15 years. As Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur, I recommend that this document or fund ought to pass.
Thank you. Counsel Orrell, the Chair of the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseur, seeks acceptance of the committee report and passage of docket number 0136. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0136 has passed. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0179?
Document number 0179, order for a hearing to discuss trash, trash collection in Boston.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counsel Peppin, the Chair of the Committee on City Services Innovation Technology. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Yesterday, the City Services and Innovation Technology Committee held a hearing on these Docuets sponsored by Counselors Durkin, Coletta, and Louie Jen. We were also met by our fellow colleagues, Counselor Flynn, Murphy, Fitzgerald, Brayden, Weber, Anderson, and Counselor Santana. We had a productive conversation with panelists from the administration on different research they are doing for trash collection, contracts, and materials for a more efficient process. Our public testimony brought community members across the city explaining the need for further review as a capital waste service contract is expiring in June 2024. We look forward to more, to more conversations during budget hearings on new methods. And I recommend this docket will remain in committee.
The chair recognizes Counsel Mahia. Counsel Mahia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just for the record, I want to state that I was also in that hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. The committee report on docket number 0179, uh, thank you. The committee report on 0179, the docket number 0179 shall remain in committee. Mr. Clerk, will you please read docket number 0198?
Document number 0198, order for a hearing regarding technological infrastructure improvements across city departments.
Thank you. The chair recognizes the Chair of the Committee on, on City Innovation, City Services and Innovation Technology, Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Also yesterday, the City Services and Innovation Technology Committee held a hearing on this docket sponsored by Counselors Coletta, Flynn, and Brayden. We were also joined by our colleagues, Counselor Murphy, Louie Jen, Anderson, Brayden, Mahia,
We were also joined by our colleagues Counsel Murphy, Louie Jen, Anderson, Braden, Mejia, Fitzgerald, and Counsel Durkin. We had Chief of Information Officer Santiago Garcias and Chief of Staff Carrie Jordan of the Department of Innovation Technology to give an update on their current work mapping the parking signs throughout the city, as well as plans for future tech updates. The councilors present engaged in a great conversation for tech upgrades, not only in the remote online services for our residents, but also within city halls as well. This docket will remain in committee and open to conversation.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President, and thank you to the Chair, my co-sponsors Counselor Flynn and Counselor Braden for their work, and all my colleagues for joining. As mentioned by the Chair, we heard from our Chief Info Officer Sandy Garcias and Carrie Jordan, who we all know well. This was a continuation of a conversation that we first had in October of last year in an amalgamation of two separate dockets, one broadly speaking about the technological infrastructure of our city, but then also the digitization of parking regulations in the city. And it sounds like Boston, based on the conversation yesterday, Boston is progressing in terms of its technological infrastructure to carry out basic city services effectively and efficiently to ultimately serve the residents of Boston. The technology programs, softwares and system that we use as a city and in departments are the backbone of everything we do here. Updating everything we use to break down collaboration and communication silos and barriers to communicate to our residents is a top priority, but it does require significant investment and staff capacity. We learned yesterday that due to additional budget resources that we secured in last year's budget, we've been able to contract out important projects that make our city run better and add four new positions to do it. Some of the more namely or important projects that we've embarked on is auditing all 300,000 of our assets in the public realm, understanding all of the parking regulations in the city of Boston and categorizing them. We had no idea and we didn't have a full audit of what was even on our streets. We had to rely on Google Maps, which is fine, but not good if we want to run a city effectively. Insuring systems like COBucks, which tracks street permits, are actually working and speaking across departments and with utility companies, and so we should be reviewing an assessment from Do It shortly, and so I look forward to getting that and sending it out to my colleagues and continuing this conversation because it is so important to the health and vitality of our city. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Coletta. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you. Honored to join my co-sponsors in this important hearing. I also had the opportunity during this hearing to ask Do It if they would include ensuring that our school buses, especially our buses that transport BPS student athletes to their practice, to their game, or to their after-school program, arrive on time and pick up our students when they're supposed to be picked up on. This is an issue I'm going to focus on during the budget process, but with the great technology we have across Boston, there should be no reason why we can't ensure every student athlete gets to their game, gets to their practice, knowing where the bus is, and there should be zero mistakes going forward, knowing that we have the best technology in the world. So that's the issue I'm going to focus on, but again, want to say thank you to the sponsors and honored to join with you today. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0198 will remain in committee. And Counsel Peppin, I know you had a double header yesterday with two hearings, and as a new counsel, you really handled it well, so thank you for holding those hearings yesterday. We are now on to motions, orders, and resolutions. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0645?
Docket number 0645, Counselor Mejia offered the following: An ordinance establishing the Office of Inspector General within the city of Boston.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and I just want to note, Counsel Peppin, there was one of those hearings that I wasn't at, so I just want to clear that up. For the record, you know, attendance is under my scope here, and I want to make sure that I get credit for when I show up.
Counsel Mejia.
Yeah, I do. Thank you. So I am, first, before I even start off, I want to add Counselor Worrell and Counsel Anderson as original co-sponsors.
Counsel Worrell is added as an original co-sponsor. Counsel Mejia, suspension of the rules, add Counsel Fernandez Anderson as an original third co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Fernandez Anderson is so added. Counsel Mejia, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. So let me just set the stage. I think that we have an amazing opportunity to really look at what we need to do to really restore trust in city government. We, when we look around the national landscape, when we look around things that are happening, even in our own backyard, there seems to be a common theme, is that people do not trust government to function in the ways that it was intended to. And given the number of opportunities that we've had to show up as a body and really fight for our constituents, this is just another pathway towards that. Bostonians deserve a city government that is grounded in transparency and accountability here to the city of Boston. One of the reasons why I established the Committee on Government Accountability and Transparency was because having been on the outside fighting and trying to have a voice and a role in the decision-making process, I've seen that time and time and time and time again, people have always felt that things are being done to them without them. And I want to really highlight that this ordinance is really shepherding the work that our council colleague, our previous council colleague, Counsel Campbell, brought to the table in 2019 in light of some of the issues that had bubbled up into the top with some corruption and some bribes that were happening here in the city of Boston. But that wasn't the reason why she filed it. She filed it because what she really wanted to do is create a mechanism in which people really felt like government was listening to them and responding to their needs. There isn't no real formal process in place that gives people an opportunity to file a complaint, not just around city services, but also city councilors. We're all elected to represent the people, and we're all accountable to the people that we represent, and this gives us an opportunity to hold ourselves to a standard in which people know that we're listening to them. We've come into this chamber to host hearings, and oftentimes, no one shows up to those hearings, and we have subpoena powers to do so, but we never really exercise that power. And I think that when we're thinking about waste, when we're thinking about overseeing different departments and opportunities for us to figure out what we can do differently, this particular office will give us some more insight. Right now, in my office, I've decided to audit four pieces of legislation: the retail residential kitchens ordinance, the Black Men's Commission, the Fair Chance Act, and the Language Access Ordinance that we passed. What good is policy if we're not able to audit how efficient it is? And so my hope is, is that we have a mechanism in place in which provides us an opportunity to really look at what we could do differently, to look at how can we look at the complaints that we get from folks. We're looking at the BPDA process. We're looking at folks that come to our office who have had issues with zoning. The district councillor from District 5, and I had a constituent who was having a hard time navigating the permitting process in the city of Boston. There was really no other vehicle for this individual to come to but to come to us. But if there was a formal process in place, they would have a direct contact with a department that can help them understand whether or not we are serving the people. So my hope is, and I want to be really clear, this is a conversation. This is the beginning of what I hope would be a good process in which we can develop for ourselves as a council, a piece of legislation that really gives people an opportunity and a voice and a platform to really hold government accountable. Now, I know that when this was filed, Counselor Campbell, I'm not sure what her aspirations were for running for higher office, but I was incredibly in awe that regardless of whether or not she was going to be mayor one day, she decided to put forth a piece of legislation that would hold even her accountable to the people. And I just want to uplift that because people have a hard time with accountability. We talk about wanting to be transparent, and when we have an opportunity to do that, we turn the eye. And I'm hoping that my colleagues will see that our residents want us to do better when it comes to being transparent and accountable to them, because ultimately, they're the ones that pay our salary, and they should have a vehicle in which they can hold us accountable. We're also looking at, the most important piece of this is really about restoring trust, and I think that this gives us an opportunity to do just that. We're also looking at procurement. We have an opportunity to really look at whether or not folks are getting a piece of that pie, as we've been talking about for so long here on the council. This gives us an opportunity to really be able to dive deeper into it. This also, this piece of legislation includes having an Oversight Advisory Committee, which will unpack a little bit further throughout the working sessions, but my hope is that we'll be able to have an independent voice and a structure for us to really be able to move things through. Now, what I do know is that politics have a way of creeping into policymaking, and so my hope is, is that we'll be able to file a hearing in a timely fashion, and we'll be able to really unpack the credibility of establishing this particular piece of legislation, and that we'll be able to host working sessions, and the administration will show up, and that we'll be able to, as a body, for once, you know, here, be able to demonstrate that we can work with the administration, that we can work with community, and that we can actually deliver on what it looks like when we're all rowing in the same direction and we're all giving the people that we serve a seat at the table. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Worrell. Counsel Worrell, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I'd like to thank Counsel Mejia for her leadership in introducing this ordinance and for adding me as an original co-sponsor. This initiative mirrors successful models implemented in other cities across the United States, included Chicago, New York, Philly, Atlanta, several of which work highly effective collaboration with their state-level counterparts. And it also builds off the work started by my predecessor, District 4 City Councillor and now Attorney General Andrea Campbell. Underscoring this potential effectiveness and enhancing transparency and efficiency in government processes, this office will have robust investigative powers, including subpoena authority and the duty to report illegal acts. The Inspector General in this ordinance is empowered to root out waste, fraud, abuse, and uphold the highest standards of ethical conduct. This ordinance, as Counsel Mejia has alluded to and spoke about, builds off the council's work five years ago to ensure a strong commitment to promoting honesty, integrity, and transparency in Boston city government, and will set a precedent for responsible fiscal management and public trust. So I'm looking forward to creating an independent and well-funded office. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to my colleague, the original sponsor, for adding me. I think there are different conversations already in community as well, maybe with councillors. I had been working on an ordinance to put together a citizens' assembly. There's an advisory council in my district. We've talked about CAP. We talked about different ways of creating structured mechanisms or accountability bodies to hold us and city departments accountable. I think that I'm really, really excited to look into this conversation through a hearing and talk about exactly what it could look like. This is exceptionally thorough, so very interested in giving you my input as well as hearing from community. I think since we're talking about in a spirit of accountability and coming from community or accountability, then let's, sorry, transparency and accountability, then let's allow community to weigh in in terms of what, how this should be structured, right? So that it's, so that we are actually exemplifying what it's supposed to be about. Thank you so much, and I look forward to the work.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Coletta. Counsel Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank the original co-sponsor. I typically withhold comments on government operations dockets, but I just want to express general support for this. I'm happy to see the resurrection and refile of this docket from 2019, originally written by Attorney General Andre Campbell. That was born out of, as you mentioned, multiple scandals that plagued the BPDA and the ZBA. And having a municipal-level inspector general in addition to the state level is a good thing due to the fact that the state-level IG never investigated the incidents that happened in City Hall. And how we funded those investigations was that we had to outsource private and expensive lawyers to help pay for those investigations. And so it was not fiscally responsible of us to outsource the services when we could have them in-house, and those reports were never independent and they were never public. And so generally, I support this. I look forward to the conversations and figuring out what the best model is, and always wanting to make sure to give credit where credit is due to my friend and our Attorney General, Andre Campbell. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and I just want to thank the sponsor for her thoughtful wording and the important message that she's relaying here today, and also wanted to highlight what Counselor Worrell has mentioned, that several other cities across the country do have it, including New York, including Philadelphia, and Lexington, Kentucky, I believe. Maybe we also can learn from them on how they went about doing it and maybe get some lessons learned, what went well and what were some of the challenges, but I think it's an excellent idea, and please add my name. Thank you.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
And thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues and really want to bring in the spirit of Counsel, former Counsel Campbell. She and I had a really good conversation, and I watched the tape the day that she introduced this, and I got to hear from my colleague Counsel Janie and Counsel Edwards, who stood up in support, and I was really struck by the level of just, like, I don't know what you call it, just workmanship in that. And even when Counsel Baker rose up, he talked about some of the concerns that he had, and it was just such a beautiful thing to see, that even though not everyone was on board, but that people were able to really lean into something and really not make it about themselves and really make it about what this moment means to those that they were representing at the time. And so I'm really encouraged by what I've heard so far from my colleagues, and ultimately, I think that if we continue to lead in this way, I think that those who put us in these seats are going to really believe that we are working all in collaboration and in true partnership and in true spirit of holding ourselves accountable to those that we serve. So I just want to say thank you, especially thank you to Counsel Campbell for writing such a strong piece of legislation that we were able to resuscitate, the same way that we did with the Black Men's Commission that was under former Tito Jackson's leadership. And so if we can get this to the finish line, it'll be two pieces of legislation that our office was able to champion because my predecessors had the audacity to bring those things to the table. So thank you.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, would you please add Councillors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber? Please add the Chair. Docket number 0645 will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0646?
Docket number 0646, Counsel Peppin offered the following: A petition for a special law and age waiver for the maximum age requirement for Max Anderson to join the Boston Police Department.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can I also add Counsel President Louie Jen as an original co-sponsor?
Counsel Peppin, suspension of the rules, add Counsel Louie Jen as an original third co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counsel Louie Jen is so added. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. The individual who would like to, his name is Max Anderson, and he handed me a letter that he wanted me to read on behalf of him. He says, he arrived, he's of age 44, living in Hyde Park, where he has been living for the past eight years. He's currently a manager at Roll to Responsibility, a group home setting where he takes care of residents with disabilities. He's working there for the past five years, and he's been a Realtor before that. He moved to the United States in 2010 from Haiti. It was a tough immigration process for him, but luckily, he was able to gain entry and now has become a U.S. citizen, and now he's eligible to apply to become a Boston police officer. He became a U.S. citizen in 2019, but due to some difficulties in his personal life, he was not confident that he was able to make it through the training process at the time. Now, he's in a better state, physically, mentally, and in excellent health to become a police officer. a police officer to protect and serve his community. He took the written exam on Monday, March 18th, and he strongly believes and he is confident that he will pass. But he was devastated when he heard that he had to be younger than 40 years old in order to become a Boston police officer. He's writing this letter to the city council to ask for a favor, to have an age waiver that will allow me to be appointed to the Boston Police Off, Boston Police Department in the incoming class of June 2024. Thank you for your understanding and consideration in asking the city council to please help him achieve, become a police officer so that he can serve his community and the city he calls home now. For my colleagues, this is, this is my third home rule petition that I called for, for age waivers, which is why later in the agenda, you will see that myself and Counselor Coletta and Counselor Santana pushing for an increase in that age max, because there's a lot of individuals in this, in this city that are healthy, they're well-experienced, they're great citizens, that they just want to serve our community as a police officer. And that's why I'm asking for your support in this document, in this document. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, am I the second co-sponsor? Is there a third co-sponsor? Or is there?
There's no third co-sponsor.
Okay, sorry. Just to correct the record, just adding myself as original co-sponsor. And no need for suspension of the rules. Thank you, Counselor Peppin, for bringing this forward. Thank you for adding me as an original co-sponsor. We do bring a lot of these to the council. Max Anderson is more than capable and would love to see him be able to join the force. And I want to thank you for filing this and hope to be able to get this through and, and put this up if we can help. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Durkin, Fernandez-Anderson, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Murphy, Santana, Weber, Worrell. This docket will be referred to the Committee on Government Operations. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0647?
Docket number 0647, Counselor Mejia, offer the following: Order for a hearing on diversifying cannabis business models.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia. Counselor, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. This is just a refile. You know, a lot of the work that we've been doing here in the city, we've often talked about creating more access and more equity and more opportunities for cannabis and folks who are trying to get into that industry, but we always fall short. And I think that what we're trying to do with this hearing order is really look at all of the different ways in which folks who are looking to enter the industry can do so, that it doesn't begin and end with opening up a shop. I'm looking at ways that we can explore our retail residential kitchens ordinance that we filed in the past and looking at ways that maybe we can use this as a way to open up a cannabis Commonwealth kitchen model in which folks can have the opportunity to test out some products and then sell it to some of the local shops that are in and around the neighborhood. So I know there's a lot of regulations that come around with cannabis, so I'm nowhere thinking that with this hearing, we're gonna make it all happen. But I do think that it warrants a conversation in terms of making sure that the city's doing everything in their power to give folks who are trying to enter the cannabis industry the tools and the supports that they need and that we're thinking outside of the box and that we're pushing ourselves to look at our protocols, policies, and procedures to make sure that we can meet the moment. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Durkin. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Counselor Mejia, thank you so much for this. It is so important. I have been watching over many years the promises of equity in the cannabis industry and just seeing that they fall flat. We've lost the ball here. Local operators are not able to operate in our city. Nationwide chains are completely taking over. And I think there was, you know, a move at the State House, there was a move locally to promote equity in cannabis, and it completely failed. And so thank you so much for this conversation. I'm so excited to take part. And just adding, a lot of cannabis dispensaries who have gotten their initial approvals in my district are caught up in litigation after litigation. Local people who want to start a business in this city are being told, here's the, you know, basically, here's this national thing, they get the go-ahead. Here's this local thing, you're getting sued by all your nearby butters. So we have a lot to work on, and I will just signal my support for the end of the buffer zone. This is incredibly important, and Counselor, I want to work with you on this. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin. The chair recognizes Counselor Mejia.
Madam President, thank you. Counselor Durkin, you want to, you want to be added as a original co-sponsor? Well, then you shall be added.
Thank you. Counselor Durkin is added as an original co-sponsor. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Docket number 0647 will be referred to the Committee on Small Business and Professional Licenseure. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0648?
Docket number 0648, Counselor Flynn, offer the following: Order for a hearing to discuss pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and expanding the Safety Surge Program in the city of Boston.
The chair recognizes Counselor Flynn. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, may I suspend Rule 12 and add Counselor Fitzgerald and Counselor Santana as an original co-sponsors?
Counselor Fitzgerald is added as an original co-sponsor. Counselor Flynn, to the suspension of the rules, to add Counselor Santana as an original third co-sponsor. Seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Santana is so added. Counselor Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is a hearing to discuss measures that would improve pedestrian safety, traffic calming, and the possibility of expanding the Safe Surge Program in Boston. Last week, a four-year-old child, Gracie, was fatally struck on Sleeper Street and Congress Street in the Fort Point neighborhood. This week, on Tuesday, a pedestrian was struck and killed on Frontage Road. There are now four pedestrian deaths in Boston so far this year, with seven pedestrian fatalities last year. These tragedies remind us of the work that must be done to realize Vision Zero, which is the goal of having zero serious and fatal traffic crashes. And we have other, we have had other similar tragedies like this in the past. In 2018, we lost a beautiful young boy, Colin, after being struck by a car on L Street in South Boston. Following that tragic crash, I've recommended a 12-point pedestrian safety plan for South Boston and to the city, which featured traffic calming infrastructure like speed humps, raised crosswalks, rapid flash beacons with pedestrian islands in the middle of the road, curb extensions, among others. Pedestrian safety has long been a top priority for the city council and I. In 2018, I called for and held a hearing with Counselor Baker to advocate for reducing the speed limit to 20 miles per hour in our residential neighborhoods. And now we see many of those 20 mile-per-hour signs with our speed hump zones up now. In 2019, I called for and held a city council hearing on concurrent traffic signals, as I continue to believe it is a recipe for disaster to have cars and pedestrians in conflict due to right-turn green arrow and a pedestrian walk sign at the same time. Just as, just as an example, on concurrent jurisdiction for the vehicle and for the pedestrian. That basically means that the pedestrian can cross in the crosswalk and at the same time, the vehicle can make a turn on that same crosswalk. It's many cases throughout the city, and I could name you a half dozen in and around my neighborhood. But just on the corner of Melcher Street and Summer Street, if you're on Summer Street heading into South Boston and you're taking a right onto Melcher Street driving, you would be able to take a right, driving, and with the green light, and at the same time, the pedestrian would be able to cross also at the same time. At a public community meeting on Friday down at the Fort Point Neighborhood Association and with residents of, of South Boston and Fort Point and with city officials present, I highlighted this issue and asked that we revisit allowing both the pedestrian and the vehicle to both have the right-of-way at the same time. I'm still calling for that again. We need to implement that immediately and give the pedestrian the right-of-way, give the pedestrian the opportunity to cross the street in the crosswalk at a safe time. And then the automobile can drive, taking, taking the turn. But both of them can't do it, only one or the other at the same time, and it needs to be the pedestrian. Not sure why we still have this in our city. I have asked many times in writing and in community meetings to change this policy. Again, I'm asking for this policy to be changed. In 2020, after a handful of car crashes into buildings or light poles in one week in South Boston, I called for and held a hearing again with Counselor Baker on declaring speeding cars a public health emergency. In 2021, after the passage of the federal bipartisan infrastructure bill, I called for a per, a portion of whatever funding the city would receive to be dedicated to address longstanding pedestrian safety needs with improved traffic calming infrastructure. I continue to believe that pedestrian safety is one of the most critical issues we face in the city of Boston. In 2023, the city of Boston implemented the Safety Surge Program, where the city installed zones of speed humps on eligible neighborhood streets to make our streets safer for our pedestrians. They include the 20 miles-per-hour zone we also advocated for previously. However, currently, the speed hump program is only being installed on smaller side streets, but not on wider streets and busiest streets, where cars and communities are consistently speeding and serious crashes also occur. As it relates to that, I would like to see the speed miles per hour be reduced even further in Boston. 25 miles an hour is excessive driving through a neighborhood, a dense neighborhood in Boston. I think it should be 20 miles an hour. I even think it should be 15 miles an hour. But driving 25 miles an hour in residential streets is unhealthy. It's unsafe. Our neighborhood main streets, commercial roads, high-traffic corridors, bus routes are often dangerous for pedestrians to cross and should also have traffic calming infrastructure in place to force speeding vehicles to slow down. Many residents have advocated for speed humps, raised crosswalks in these areas, and we should consider whether Safe Surge programs should be updated with infrastructure to be installed on high-traffic roads to ensure road safety for all. Finally, a gentleman right behind me, John Provenzano, is advocating for this new technology other cities have, where if a car is speeding, say, 40 miles an hour, this electronic device would automatically reduce that speeding car down to the appropriate speed, uh, speed limit, whether it's 25 or 25, 20 miles an hour. Other cities across the country have experimented with it. Maybe it's time for Boston to experiment it, experiment with it as well. So I hope that we can use this hearing to discuss how we can work together, enhancing traffic calming measures, ensuring safer streets and sidewalks, how we expand our existing plan for traffic calming infrastructure. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Flynn. The chair recognizes Counselor Fitzgerald. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. On hearing this news and, and thank you to, to the maker and honored me to be a co-sponsor as well, especially the news of the four-year-old child, I think of my own four-year-old child, and that's, that's worst nightmare scenario stuff. It's something that goes through your head constantly as a parent, as, not even when you're just downtown, but when you're in your own neighborhoods as well. And the worst part about it is they're so preventable, right? If the driver pays attention, gets off his cell phone, isn't texting and driving, if there's, if there's daylighting, there's proper signage and proper enforcement, all these things are preventable. And that's what makes the, the incident from last night and one from last week that much more infuriating. Everywhere I go in the district, the most diverse district in the entire city, everywhere I go, no matter where it is, people are asking for these speed humps. And I agree, but I do think that the administration should work with the city councilors in at least giving a list of the 15 biggest perpetrators of speeding in, in each district to, and, and prioritize those, because us in the neighborhood know on the ground what the worst streets are. And so I continue to push for that, as I have been, because I think even, it, it would touch every community, it would, we'd work with the council to identify them, and we'd take care of the main perpetrators, and at least everyone would feel touched to know that at least, okay, it might be a while now before they come back around and do the rest of the streets, but at least they can, they can begin. The problem here is enforcement. I think about the technology hearing that we just had yesterday chaired by Counselor Peppin, and thinking about that role and how this happens. I know, you know, I'm no fan of Big Brother, but there's got to be a way, because we can't recruit as many police as we need to do traffic enforcement, there's got to be technology that can take that place. I'm losing faith in the drivers of Boston and in the visitors that drive into Boston. And so there's got to be a measure taken, unfortunately, to counteract that. But again, it's about being proactive. We can't be reactive here and wait till an incident occurs to go and make a change. And through the years, I know folks on this body have made those changes, so I, I look forward to continuing to push those changes till we make a, a completely safe traffic for our city. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Santana. Counselor Santana, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Thank you, Madam President. I want to first thank Counselor Flynn for your leadership on this and including me as a co-sponsor. As Counselor Flynn noted, and just a matter, and Counselor Fitzgerald as well, in just a matter of days, we've had two tragic reminders of the danger, uh, dangerous pedestrians faced on our streets, just in District 2 alone. The death of a young girl who was just four years old, as well the death of a man who was a wheelchair user, are sad and senseless reminders that the safety of our streets must be our priority and that our most vulnerable street users are often the most at risk. And this is certainly not a problem only for downtown neighborhoods. Eight pedestrians were killed by drivers in Boston in 2023, including Rosendale, Hyde Park, and Dorchester. These deaths may call extra attention to this issue, but we also must not accept the dangerous and often life-altering injuries caused by our drivers. Boston's Vision Zero data reports 588 crashes involving pedestrians last year, along with 391 crashes involving bicyclists, and over 2,500 crashes last year in Boston involving a motor vehicle. Sometimes accidents do happen, and certainly responsible driving is critical. But too often, crashes and, and the resulting injuries are the results of policy decisions. Street designs can reduce crashes. Expanding sightlights and intersections, known as daylighting, can make pedestrians more visible. Speed humps, raised crosswalks, and changes to street layout can show, can slow down drivers from speeding or blowing through intersections. Protected lanes with actual physical barriers can create truly safe space for commuter, for commuters using bikes and other micro mobility devices to safely get where they're going while keeping pedestrians safe, too. Traffic signals phasing can eliminate conflicts between cars and pedestrians. Boston's first center-running bus lanes on Columbus Avenue have shown street design can make more drivers obey the speed limit, improve pedestrian safety with safer crossings, and ca, and make car, car access to parking easier and safer, while also reducing transit times for bus riders. And if we can get the state legislature to allow it, automated enforcement of red lights, stop signs, bus lanes, and illegal turns could help our streets function safer and as intended. The city is making progress on some of these initiatives, but we can do more, and we must find the right balance between temporary quick fixes and ensuring we put permanent, durable, and self-enforcing safe street designs in place. None of this is about forcing anyone to commute a certain way. It's about ensuring that our, all of our streets and all of our users are safe, no matter how you decide to get around. I look forward to working together with my co-sponsor and my colleagues to ensure that Boston lives up to the standard, to the stated mission of, sorry, to the stated mission of Vision Zero Boston to eliminate fatal and serious crashes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Counselor Peppin. Counselor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to start by giving my condolences to both those families that lost a loved one. I think it's important for us to remember that those are residents of Boston that we've lost. And as Counselor Fitzgerald- Um, and as Councilor Fitzgerald mentioned, as a father of a three-year-old, I cannot imagine what those parents are, are experiencing. So I commend Councilor Flynn for bringing this to the table. I wish I could have been added as a fourth co-sponsor if that was a thing. Um, but it reminds me of my own hearing order calling for a safe school zone, um, plan because in my district, um, we're home to one of the, those four fatalities that you mentioned, um, one of them being in Bexley, in the intersection of Bexley Road and Washington Street in Rosendale. Um, a few weeks ago, a pedestrian was killed by, by a driver in the nighttime. And just a year ago, unfortunately, another four-year-old was hit, was killed by a driver on Wood Ave. in Hyde Park. Um, and when you think about that is, like Councilor Fitzgerald mentioned, these are preventable accidents. Um, but as a city, we need to take accountability for the lack of infrastructure that, that does not exist, um, in the city. Everyone has mentioned it. It's better crosswalks, spate, raised crosswalks, stop signs, the bump outs, better enforcement. We don't even have to go too far to look at a city that I think does a good job at this. Um, Providence, Rhode Island does a fine job of using their traffic lights cameras for enforcement where they ticket speeders and violators of red lights. So I want to push our state legislator to consider that and make it possible for us here in Boston to do that because I think what's happening here is, it's, it's too much for this, for the city of Boston. Um, so I just want to say that I want to work with you, Councilor Flynn, to make this happen, to work with the administration, the Boston Transportation Department to, to make sure that we, we are creating a safe environment for all residents in the city of Boston. That's what we deserve.
Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Murphy. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, and thank you, Councilor Flynn, for bringing this forward, um, an important issue. And I did think of your stop sign pin when you did your maiden speech, and I know the will is here on this council to make changes. I got three calls just this week, one, um, about, two about speed humps. And as we know, with Waze and other apps we use, what were once quiet side streets are now cut-throughs where cars are speeding and where kids used to be able to play, you know, safely on the sidewalk or cross the street to a neighbor. Now, parents aren't able to do that anymore, and that's a quality of life issue. Also got a call and have had several calls about the intersection right near my house at the top of Councilor Fitzgerald Street, um, at Oakden Ave. and Adam Street where we have the library, we have the Kenny School twice a day with that traffic, where the neighbors there are very concerned that, is it going to take a fatality or a bad accident for things to change? So looking forward to this hearing. I know that we need to include the police also because at community meetings across the city, there's the balance between the police having the ability to ticket the offenders but not wanting to over-ticket, and so we definitely need to have them part of the conversation. But also the answer that I have to often give to people that I know is frustrating is you'll be put on a list, maybe soon, they'll get to it. So I do think that this hearing hopefully will push the administration and the departments who can make change, um, have it happen quicker. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Mihia. You have the floor. You have, you have the floor, Councilor Mihia.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I just want to rise and thank Councilor Flynn as I was looking through the tape, um, in preparation for filing the Inspector General's, uh, ordinance. It was the same, you, that same, you were there talking about pedestrian safety. You actually introduced, you know, a hearing around that, and I just want to say thank you because consistency, right? In terms of the issues that you're fighting for, it's great to see that you keep on it and how important it is for us to have people in office that are going to fight for the things that we all deeply care about. But it was just such a coincidence that the same day that Councilor Campbell filed that and I filed this, you, it's, it goes to show that the work still needs to, we, we need to, right now, um, you know, I, I see the central bus lane discussions, I see all of the things that deal with, uh, bike lanes and everything, and I think that this is an opportunity for us to add, um, pedestrian safety lanes to the conversation too. I think that this is how people feel, like we're really listening to them. So I look forward to participating in the hearing and lending my voice and my advocacy to you both, um, to the three sponsors of this, um, to make sure that, you know, we get to the, we get to where we need to be. Thank you for your leadership.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Weber. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, you know, uh, I, I thank you to Councilor Flynn for, for bringing this and the co-sponsors. Uh, and it's a, it's just a terrible thing that, uh, you know, it took two recent fatalities and the, the death of a four-year-old for this, uh, you know, for us to have to deal with this. Um, just, uh, you know, traffic safety, uh, speed humps, that's, I hear probably more about those issues in District Six than any other. Um, but I, I'd just like to highlight some data. Um, you know, uh, these accidents, it's not inevitable as a result of the, the cars we have or the cell phones. Um, you know, from, from 1990 to 2020 in Europe, uh, pedestrian fatalities went down by nearly 80%. In the last 10 years, uh, pedestrian fatalities in the U.S. have gone up by 25%. Um, another study showed that for every mile that, uh, you know, uh, somebody in the United States walks as a pedestrian, uh, compared to someone in England, the, the, the American pedestrian is six times more likely to be killed by a vehicle. Um, you know, this should not be happening. It, it's a countrywide issue, and it's something that we should be doing a lot better job here in Boston. And I think as our European, uh, brothers and sisters have shown, you know, you can, this is a problem that we can solve. So I look forward to working on it with my fellow councilors. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Janez. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. You have the floor, sorry.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to, um, thank, uh, first, Councilor Flynn for filing this, such an important issue, um, extremely important in my district as well. Um, but I really wanted to take the time and say that, um, uh, to, for us to, um, thank our mayor for prioritizing this issue. This is, this is actually one of like the very top on her agendas, and we've seen that throughout the city, um, as I, we continue transportation, um, plans in District Seven. I know that, um, also thanking, uh, Chief Yasha Franklin Hodge, um, to, uh, just, just making sure that this is a priority, but also, um, doing the best that he can with the capacity that he has while he's trying to increase capacity so that he can, uh, develop or put these speed humps in places and address all of, uh, our sidewalk issues. Um, I know that, um, our council president yesterday, uh, mentioned this in terms of how, uh, this is one particular department that will prioritize the work and come out and do walking tours and sort of like studies and, uh, actually work with councilors to do this work. So I think this conversation is super important, and it's going to be one that's going to be, um, robust and productive, uh, considering that our mayor and the Transportation Department definitely prioritize the safety for, um, our citizens. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Fernandez-Janez. The chair recognizes Councilor Durkin. Councilor Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, and thank you to Councilor Flynn for sponsoring this. Um, I think I'd be remiss if in this conversation we didn't also mention the shortage of engineers in the city and all of the open jobs in, you know, in particularly the Boston Transportation Department. Um, and also, um, adding the, um, the amount of the people that make the speed humps. There's a limited, uh, capacity there. And so just adding, um, this is such an important conversation. In my district, we're having a conversation around Terrace, Parker, and Gurnee Streets and Mission Hill and how to reconfigure and reformulate those streets to meet the needs of, of a street that's being developed. And I think, um, I also would be remiss if we didn't mention, um, the opportunities that we have within our role as city councilors in the development process to ensure that we use the mitigation from projects, um, and in our districts to ensure that we get those publicway improvements and we get, um, and we get, um, increased pedestrian, uh, safety through development. And, um, and I'm really, um, wanted to also build on Councilor Tanya Fernandez-Janez's point about our, um, Boston Transportation Department. Because what I see, I have a, um, a meeting with them really frequently and, uh, that had been set up by my predecessor, Kenzie Bach, who cared a lot about these issues. And, um, so we have this reoccurring meeting, and just the talent that we have working within the Boston Transportation Department, I'm really honored to work alongside them and excited for the conversation, um, and also excited to, you know, really drill down, um, in the five neighborhoods that I have about where safety improvements can be made, um, and also into the data like, um, Councilor Weber said, um, because a lot of those incidences are available publicly, so prioritizing improvements in the district. And also excited to work with Councilor Flynn, um, particularly on an intersection at Dartmouth Street, which is in his district, but a lot of my constituents use. So really grateful to the advocates and, um, and all the councilors for being interested in this issue as well. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Councilor Flynn for leading on this issue yet again. You've been very, very dogged in your, in elevating this issue over many, many years. Uh, I'd like to follow on on a comment from Councilor Durkin's comments. In, in District Nine, many of our public realm and pedestrian safety improvements are tied to development, and that's all well and good. We're delighted to have extra money to put in to, uh, improve pedestrian safety, but if that project stalls or is delayed, that means we're sitting for 10 years waiting for pedestrian improvements to happen, uh, in, in, in the parts of the neighborhood because the developer hasn't got to it and built this project. So, you know, it's wonderful that we're getting that money, but if it's waiting for a certificate of occupancy or a, a issuing of a permit and that process is delayed, then that definitely stalls the whole process for us. So, you know, I think we have to find other ways of, um, not being so reliant on, um, development money, uh, or having some sort of a, a pipeline or some sort of a mechanism where, uh, we don't have to delay the improvements until the projects are, are moved on forward. Um, the other thing we have to deal with in Alston Brighton, I'm sure Dorchester has the same issue, uh, is cut-through traffic. Um, maybe all of our districts have this problem, cut-through private, traffic due to Waze. Uh, we have many, we have probably thousands, tens of thousands of cars come through our neighborhood at a very fast clip every day to avoid going, uh, on the Massachusetts Pike, which is usually a parking lot from seven o'clock to nine o'clock every morning. Um, and they, uh, they cut through the, the, cut through our neighborhoods and residential neighborhoods, and we see, uh, near misses pedestrian, uh, pedestrian accidents. And, you know, we've had some fatalities over the last few years, and it's just so sad. And it is, it's a preventable event. It may be seen as an accident, but I really, in this context, there's no such thing as an accident. We can do so much more to prevent this. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Braden. Um, I want to thank Councilor Flynn and the co-sponsors for filing. Councilor Flynn uplifted the names of Gracie, recently passed Colin, so many of my colleagues uplifted those who have passed, adults, um, and children. Councilor Peppin talked about Wood Avenue. Um, it's a street that I drive on every day, and ever since the fatality last year, I haven't been able to drive on the street and pass his mom's house without feeling tremendous sadness. And I just want to lift Yvonne Pierre, um, into this space as a four-year-old that was, um, struck and killed in Hyde Park. And I think many of you have said it, no parent should have to bury their child. Um, if there's anything that should drive policy change, it's when parents have to bury their young kids. And, um, few things have changed and struck me as much as the funeral of Yvonne Pierre. Um, because a four-year-old dying should not, should not happen in our streets. So, um, I want to thank all of my colleagues, and hopefully we can, um, get some movement. I know the mayor, the mayor was also at the funeral, and I know was deeply, deeply affected. And so, um, I hope that we can get some traction on this issue.
Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Councilors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez-Janez, Mihia, Murphy, Peppin, Weber, Worrell. Please, out of the chair. Docket number 0648, where we refer to the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0649.
Docket number 0649, Councilor Fernandez-Janez offered the following. Order for a hearing to discuss and establish city council roles and responsibilities and ways to implement metrics to hold members accountable.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Fernandez-Janez. You have the floor.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. I'd like to actually withdraw this filing. I think that Councilor Mihia's, um, filing on, uh, the docket 0645, um, actually already encompassed a lot of these points and, uh, would actually do the same thing. So I don't want us to be redundant. I think I will follow, um, her lead in being a co-sponsor, um, in the conversation. Hopefully, we're getting the same, um, objectives, uh, taken care of in the hearing, uh, under Councilor Mihia's, um, filing. Thank you.
Thank you. Docket number 0649 has been withdrawn. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0650.
Docket number 0650, Councilors Peppin and Coletta offer the following. Order for a hearing to raise the age requirement for entrance to the Boston Police Academy.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Peppin. Councilor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. And for the record, may I also add Councilor Santana as a third co-sponsor?
Councilor Peppin, to the suspension of the rules, um, to add Councilor Santana as a third original co-sponsor, seeing in hearing no objections, Councilor Santana so added. Councilor Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, as mentioned earlier, in my first three months in office, I've already filed for three homer petitions to, to help someone with their age waiver to become a police officer. Increasing the age maximum from 39 years old to 45 and adopting a more inclusive approach to becoming a police officer in Boston holds significant importance in shaping law enforcement agency that reflects the diverse needs and values of the community it serves. By expanding the age limit, the police department can tap into a broader pool of potential recruits, including individuals who may have pursued alternative career paths or gained valuable life experiences before considering law enforcement. This can lead to a more mature and well-rounded police force, but are equipped to handle the multifaceted challenges of modern policing with empathy, wisdom, and cultural competence. Just in my first three months in office, I have filed three homer petitions to assist local residents over the age of 39 to become police officers. Mr. O'Brien, who was previously part of the EMS. Mr. Guzman, who worked for Boston Housing Authority for over a decade. And now Mr. Henderson, a proud Hyde Park resident who currently works for Road to Responsibility. All three outstanding citizens who are very qualified, who simply had difficulty applying to become a police officer because of their age. By increasing the age maximum to 45 years of age, the police department can attract a more diverse array of candidates, enriching the organization with variety of perspectives, languages, and cultural competencies. A police force that reflects the demographics of the city it serves not only enhances trust and cooperation within communities, but also improves the effectiveness of policing efforts by promoting greater understanding and empathy among officers and residents alike. Raising the age maximum is an essential step toward building a more equitable, resilient, and community-oriented police force in Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Coletta. Councilor Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Madam President. I want to thank, um, the, uh, my co-sponsors for their leadership on this. Um, the Boston City Council has filed multiple homer petitions to waive the maximum age requirement, uh, to Boston residents. State-level regulations, um, uh, set the max at 32 years, um, uh, 32 years old. And then, under Councilor Flaherty's leadership in 2007, he increased that to, to 40, and that occurred after a hearing and then a subsequent homer petition. So that is the goal here, but we wanted to bring in all stakeholders to, to talk through it. But, um, our population's health is generally improving. We have better access to nutrition and healthcare, um, and other factors. And so there's this whole pool of individuals who are willing and able to become, uh, police officers. So we might as well simply give them a chance to, to even apply. Uh, we're not lowering the standards, um, and all we're just hoping is, is to give them a pathway to take the test, um, both the written test and then the, the physical test. It is a crucial measure to help fill the personnel shortages that we see in, in the police department. And just good government, when there are multiple special laws, they no longer become special, to put it in the most simple terms. And so why not just create a simple fix to what exists at the state? And I also think it's important to amend this system where those with access to this information to know, even know or, or file a special legislative docket, I think is, is privileged information. And so we want to expand that out to make it more, um, accessible and equitable for everybody. So I look forward to the conversations on this and, um, look forward to hearing from, from everybody about what our limitations might be, if there are any, but really just this is a, a well-intentioned docket, um, and I'm proud to be a co-sponsor of it. Thank you.
Thank you. The chair recognizes Councilor Santana. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you to Councilors Peppin and, and Coletta for including me as a co-sponsor and, and for your leadership. Um, my partners on this matter have covered much of what I, I wanted to say, um, so I will just emphasize one point briefly. one point briefly. We are constantly short on police officers in Boston. It's a demanding and difficult job, and it's one that often goes with too few thanks for a job well done serving our community. And yet, despite our need for more police officers, we often hear cases of people who have fought hard to overcome obstacles to pursue the dream of serving Boston's public safety as police officers, only to be stopped by an arbitrary age limit for the police academy. We heard an example of this just today in the case of Max Henderson, who immigrated from Haiti, moved to Boston, and worked for years to become a citizen and pursue becoming a police officer. The police academy and police department have rigorous requirements. There's no reason to block applicants who can meet those criteria just because they've celebrated some extra birthdays. The wisdom earned through diverse lived experiences, first careers, and time invested in community and family before entering the police academy can all benefit our police force. To meet the public safety needs of our city, we should embrace and celebrate these applicants, not shun them. I look forward to hearing on this matter, so we can collaborate to create a path for dedicated individuals to serve our city as police officers. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Santana. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Murphy, Weber, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Please also add Counselor Durkin. Thank you. Docket number 0650 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please, oh, and please add Counselor Mejia's name as well? Okay. Thank you. Docket number 0650 will be referred to the Committee on Public Safety and Criminal Justice. Mr. Clerk, please read docket number 0651.
Docket number 0651, Counselor Murphy offered the following: Order for a hearing to discuss the need that all our youngest children in the universal pre-kindergarten program are receiving their special education services.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Murphy. Counsel, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counsel President. As I think many of our hearing orders that we file come from calls we get from concerned constituents, and I've gotten a few calls from parents and teachers who are providing this wonderful opportunity. As many of us know, we have a new program in the city of Boston, the Universal Pre-Kindergarten, the UPK. This program is funded by the city of Boston, and it promises to deliver on high-quality choices that are free of cost to Boston's three- and four-year-olds. Anyone who has entered the BPS system knows that we call our three-year-old program K-0. Our four-year-old program is K-1, and then K-2 is open to all children, which is kindergarten. So the Boston UPK increases the number of seats, which we know we have never had enough seats for our three- and four-year-olds in the BPS system. And it is a community-based providers that are offering up to 992 seats. These are at community centers and other places across the city. This encompasses an additional 2,556 K-1 seats in BPS for our four-year-olds without disabilities and 880 K-0 and K-1 seats for our three- and four-year-olds that do have special needs. As many of you know, I was a special education teacher, a K-1 teacher for many years, so I taught our special education students. If you are identified as having a special need and your family already has you enrolled in the early intervention program, on the day of your third birthday, you are guaranteed a seat in BPS in a K-0 classroom. And for many students, they would be taking that seat. So some of our students who are entering into these UPK seats are maybe already identified. That's something I do want to get more information on. But what is happening, that children who aren't identified prior to this are in a school setting, the teachers and others are noticing some delays, and they're requesting testing, and then needing to find special education teachers to provide these services for our students. So I do want to have this conversation to make sure that we are providing the special education services, but at the same time, we have Krista McSwain in the UPK program at this hearing, so we can make sure, especially, as always, we talk about heading into budget season, that we're supporting that program to make sure that they have the resources necessary so that no child is left without services and no parent is told that, sorry, we don't have a place in a BPS school and we can't provide services to your child. So hoping that we'll have some good conversations and we'll have some action coming out of that. So looking forward to the hearing.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Weber. You have the floor.
I'm sorry, did I suspend Rule 12?
No, you did not.
I'm sorry.
One moment.
So I'd like to...
One moment, I'll put your mic on.
Thank you.
Sorry, I meant to suspend Rule 12 at first, and I want to add Counselor Braden and Counselor Weber as original co-sponsors.
Counselor Braden is added as an original co-sponsor. Counselor Murphy, seeing suspension of the rules and addition of Counselor Weber as an original third co-sponsor, seeing and hearing no objections, Counselor Weber so added. Counsel Murphy, you have the floor.
No.
Okay. Awesome. Counsel Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, and thank you to Counsel Murphy for bringing this up. You know, I, having recently visited Horizons for the homeless in Jackson Square, you know, it's incredibly important that we provide pre-K services for everyone across the city, and I think we need to do everything we can to ensure that that program is fully implemented. I have some personal experience with the topic of your filing. When my son was in fourth grade, he was diagnosed with autism, and he was struggling in math, but he was denied an IEP at his school, and it was incredible to me that, you know, despite the need for services, that there were these sort of bureaucratic headwinds that, you know, would be pushing back on us. And, you know, I vow to make sure that, you know, any family that needs special services in our city would get it. BPS is definitely a tone, and he's getting the services he needs now, and he's thriving, and I thank all of his teachers and providers now, but just to have gone through that process and seen, you know, the pushback is something that I need to, you know, we need to make sure that, you know, our young families here in Boston are supported. So thank you, Counsel Murphy.
Thank you, Counsel Weber. The Chair recognizes Counsel Braden. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Counsel Murphy, for adding me to this docket. I worked for 16 years at Parkland School for the Blind as a physical therapist, and, you know, I used to specialize in care of the elderly, and then all of a sudden, bang, I was working with little kids and due to a quirky change in the Medicare funding in 1997. So I really feel very strongly that we need to identify our student, our young, let's call them children, children who have special needs, identifying identification early when they're infants and shortly thereafter, to try and identify the children who need support so that they can hit their milestones or support them to reach their milestones and identify their impairments or the needs early on, because the brain is evolving, it's growing, and that's the moment. So it's really, really important that, first of all, we have early identification of those children who are in the zero to three-years-old, so that they get their early intervention and that their parents are supported to help them. But then also thereafter, in the transition to, into UPK or into school, it's make sure that those students, if they're, first of all, identify them, but if they're, and also to support them so that they develop the readiness skills, so that when they come into a regular classroom, we're talking about inclusion all across the board in our BPS system, those readiness skills are critically important so that when those young children come to a classroom with their peers, many, many other children, that they've got the skills and the support to succeed and have the readiness skills so that they can be active participants in their class and that they are successfully included in their classroom. So I think this is a really timely conversation to have because it's a critical piece of the conversation we're having about inclusion as well. So thank you, Counsel Murphy and Counsel Weber for including me.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Mejia. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank my colleagues. Yes, education is my thing, and I'm really excited that we're going to be able to pack it, unpack it here. You know, as I often talk about the fact that I started a nonprofit organization called C-Plan many years ago to create space for parents to really have a voice at the table, and what we learned through that process is that oftentimes, parents were being redirected to so many different spaces and places just to get services. And unless you have access to wealth and knowledge and information, your kids are going to end up in situations that they didn't need to be in. So I think that this is both an opportunity for accountability, right, and for us to really recognize where are the gaps and how we can stand in those gaps, and what are the checks and balances that exist when BPS forces parents, right, to play the, going down the rabbit hole to see, you get what you get and you don't get upset. And so I think that this is an opportunity for us to really get real around issues of education and special education in particular, but when it comes to the most foundational part, it's the early stages of our children and making sure that we have early detection because nothing hurts more than being, not knowing what you could have done differently to support your child. So I really do applaud the sponsors for bringing this to the table, and as with everything else, I'm really hoping that we are going to seize this moment to really take a hard look on what we need to do differently in Boston public schools, because I'm not feeling this whole idea of just passing a budget and, you know, just passing things through just for the sake of getting a win. I think that the people that are watching deserve for us to be accountable to the parents. Thank you.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Flynn, Mejia, Peppin, Santana, Worrell. Please add the Chair. Docket number 0651 will be referred to the Committee on Education. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 065Q?
Docket number 0652, Counsel Louie Jen and Santana offer the following: Resolution recognizing April as Fair Housing Month.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel President Louie Jen.
Thank you, Vice President, and I would like to add Counsel Santana as an original co-sponsor, and I'd like to suspend the rules to add Counsel Weber as an original third co-sponsor.
Seeing no objection, Counsel Santana and Counsel Weber is added as original co-sponsors. Counsel President Louie Jen, the floor is yours.
Thank you. April is Fair Housing Month. The Civil Rights Act of 1968, also known as the Fair Housing Act, was signed into law by President Lyndon Johnson on April 11, 1968. This legislation was significant because of the expansion of earlier Civil Rights Acts, specifically addressing discrimination in the sale, rental, and financing of housing based on race, religion, national origin, sex, handicap, and family status. Tomorrow, we'll be commemorating a very solemn day, which on tomorrow, April 4, 1968, Dr. Martin Luther King was assassinated, and that was one week prior to this act. Dr. King had been fighting specifically for equal rights in housing, and after he was killed, President Johnson encouraged Congress to pass the law quickly as a way to honor Dr. King's work and life and also making him a central figure in the legislation's history. I want to honor Dr. King and the work that he did in housing and in all areas, what was for the sanitation workers, and tomorrow, as we commemorate his assassination, we also must recognize the work that he has left undone, even as those tried to peel back the work of progress. The Act's enactment was also driven by the broader social context of the time, including disproportionate impact of the Vietnam War casualties on African-American and Latino families who often came home from war and faced housing discrimination. Advocacy by organizations and legislators utilized bipartisan support from senators like our very own Edward Brooke and our very own Edward Kennedy, who played crucial roles in overcoming congressional resistance. To celebrate the first anniversary of the law and from then on, April was named Fair Housing Month, I filed this resolution each year to remind us all of the idea that everyone has an equal chance to live where they want. Oftentimes, people face housing discrimination and barriers in placing their vouchers or in barriers in trying to find a place to live because of their gender identity or because of their race. And we've seen here in the city of Boston through practices of blockbusting, through practices of redlining, where government and private market work together to really prevent communities from living together. Look at Mattapan, Dorchester, Roxbury, and the history of those neighborhoods of Jewish community wanting to live beside black community, but private interests along with government practices really prevented that sort of inclusive living that we really strive for today. And so those same actors, the government, together with builders, realtors, and advertisers, must spread the message of fair housing far and wide, and I want to big up Bob Terrell in our own Office of Fair Housing and Equity for the work that he's doing and trying to really educate those around fair housing issues. The Fair Housing Act is a step towards making sure everyone has a fair chance at having a home, which is celebrated and promoted every year so that we keep improving housing equality. Myself and one of my co-sponsors, Counsel Santana, on April 8 are going to have a hearing on fair housing, and it's going to specifically allow the progress that we've made in investing more in the Office of Fair Housing and Equity and the work that we still have to do. So I just want to thank my colleagues. Vice President, I am seeking suspension and pass for this, so thank you so much, and thank you again to my co-sponsors.
Thank you. Counsel Santana, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair, and thank you to the Counsel President Louie Jen for your leadership in offering this resolution and for including me as a co-sponsor. I believe that housing is a human right. The most basic step of living up to that vision is preventing direct discrimination against people when they're renting or buying a home, getting a mortgage, or seeking housing assistance. And amazingly, next week, we'll celebrate just 56 years since the passage of this landmark civil rights legislation, which established in law this most basic idea, that people should be able to pursue a place to live without regard to their race, color, national origin, sex, family status, religion, or disability. Not that anyone should have any special rights or access, just that the playing field should be level. The Fair Housing Act is worthy of a celebration, but we certainly need to do more to ensure fair protection exists for everyone. And here in Boston, we're fortunate to have additional city and state laws in place, which extend protections against housing discrimination to include income source, including housing vouchers, as well as age, martial status, veteran, or active military status, and genetic information. And our local laws also include explicit protections against discrimination based on sexual orientation and gender identity, which is especially critical in this era when we see increasing legislative attacks against our LGBTQ plus community, particularly our trans, non-binary, and gender expansive siblings, and when we've seen just how fragile our federal protections can be. But we know just, but we know just having a law isn't enough. We have to enforce it, too. And during Fair Housing Month, we remember that our fight for housing equity and justice is ongoing. Despite our laws, evidence continues to show that housing discrimination is a widespread problem, and we shouldn't have to accept that. This problem is made worse by our housing crisis. Having too few homes available means more competition applying for apartments, making offers to homes, or finding affordable housing. And that means landlords, building managers, brokers, and owners can disregard applications for even the slightest reason, knowing someone else is always in the right behind them. We've seen in the data how this plays out, with discrimination being more common, especially against our most vulnerable residents. Discrimination against housing choice voucher holders is particularly rampant. In fact, a 2020 Suffolk Law study found discrimination in 86% of tests with housing providers in greater Boston. Everyone deserves a home, and everyone deserves fair access when trying to find one. If you've been treated unfairly by a housing provider, you can get help. Contact the City of Boston, the City of Boston Office of Fair Housing and Equity, or the Massachusetts Attorney General's Civil Rights Division, or the Massachusetts Commission Against Discrimination. They can help if you've been denied housing, charged a higher amount of rent or fees, or been harassed because of one of the characteristics that are protected by our laws. Next Monday, the city council will hold a hearing on illegal housing choice voucher discrimination and improving fair housing practices in Boston, in a combination of a hearing ordered sponsored by myself in collaboration with Counsel President Louie Jen and Counsel Weber, as well as a hearing ordered sponsored by Counsel President Louie Jen in collaboration with Counsel Weber. a hearing ordered sponsored by Counsel President Louie Jen in collaboration with Counsel Worrell and Breeden. I want to thank all my colleagues for your leadership and your continued dedication to ensuring all of our residents in Boston have a fair shot when trying to find a home. I ask my colleagues to join me in support of this resolution declaring April to be Fair Housing Month here in the city of Boston. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Weber, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Counsel Worrell. And I just want to thank Madam President Louie Jen and Counsel Santana for co-sponsoring this. You know, housing discrimination is just, it's an insidious practice that never goes away, and it's something that, you know, we can do a better job at here in the city. You know, as Counsel Santana just highlighted, even the law with the best intentions is not worth much if there's no enforcement. And so we have to make sure that, you know, we enforce our rules and do our best to combat, you know, housing discrimination based on race, having a housing voucher, or even, you know, sexual orientation. We had Trans Visibility Day here last week, and I'd just like to highlight that too often members of our trans community are discriminated against in seeking housing. And, you know, in addition to other groups, we have to make sure that they can secure housing here in our city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak? Counsel Braden, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Counsel President Louie Jen for offering this fair housing resolution. I think one of the other issues that we see in our city is not just access, fair access to the housing that we have, but also the housing we build. We do not build enough housing for families. We have, I've been, I've been at meetings where the developer will actually say, we say, "Where are the amenities for families? Have you got a playground?" "Oh, we're not going to, we're not building for families." Like, that's technically illegal. We should be mindfully, like, we're wondering why our enrollment in our schools is falling, why people are leaving the city. It's very, very difficult for families to stay in the city because of the cost of housing. And in this, in the actual building of housing, there's, there is discrimination in that process as well. So thankfully, due to the leadership of our colleague Counselor Edwards and affirmatively furthering fair housing is part of our zoning now. So developers cannot say that they're not going to build for families. But, you know, I think we have to watch all the, all the different aspects of this so that we can ensure that we're building enough, enough housing for our families. And in non-traditional families, families, so that they can safely live in the city and not be displaced. Thank you.
Anyone else looking to speak? I'll share a few words. I just want to give a big shout out to Bob Tyrell and all his work. I'm also just reminded of the book, The Color of Law, that outlines the history of housing discrimination. And also just a big shout out to Marvin Martin and the Action for Equity in their fight for anti-displacement tools here in the city of Boston. Counsel President Louie Jen and Counsel Santana, wep, oh, would anyone like to add their name? Please add Counsel Braden, Counsel Coletta, Counsel Durkin, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, Counsel Fitzgerald, Counsel Flynn, Counsel Mejia, Counsel Murphy, Counsel Peppin, Counsel Counsel President Louie Jen, Counsel Santana, Counsel Weber seek suspension of the rules and pass the docket number 0652. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 0652 has been adopted.
Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0653?
Docket number 0653, Counsel Flynn offer the following: Resolution in support of Senate 3452, Fred Hamilton Veterans Lost Records Act.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Flynn. Counsel Flynn, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, a veteran's service and medical records are critical for that veteran to receive VA benefits. But some of our veterans have had their personal records lost through no fault of their own. In 1973, a horrific fire at the National Personnel Record Center in St. Louis destroyed the records of 16 million Army and Air Force veterans. After the fire, the VA established a process for those impacted, which allowed veterans whose records were lost to use the next closest medical record or a buddy statement to meet the burden of proof. This proposed federal legislation, S. 3452, the Fred Hamilton Veterans Lost Record Act, would expand that process to all veterans whose records were lost by the VA or the Department of Defense. This bill would ensure that all veterans whose records were lost by the VA or the Department of Defense through no fault of their own can still receive their earned VA benefits. The bill's name refers to Fred Hamilton, an Air Force veteran who was exposed to toxic substances during his service in the Vietnam War. His military treatment record, along with many others, were lost through no fault of his own after being transmitted from the DOD to the VA when he retired from military service. Unfortunately, without these records, he cannot prove his health conditions are service-connected. Service-connected means that a particular veteran would receive compensation due to injuries sustained while on active duty. Our veterans who have served our country honorably, and they have earned these benefits, they should not be denied services or have to fight to prove their disabilities are service-connected due to mistakes made by the VA and the DOD through no fault of their own. I hope we can suspend and pass this today. And I also want to recognize members of the congressional delegation from Massachusetts, who I had the opportunity to meet in DC several weeks ago, including Senator Warren, Senator Maki, Congresswoman Presley, and Congressman Lynch. And we didn't necessarily discuss this piece of legislation, but we discussed a lot of veterans-related issues, especially issues impacting women veterans and homeless veterans as well. Again, I hope we can suspend and pass this today. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Is anyone else looking to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fernandez Anderson, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counsel Flynn seeks suspension of the rules, seeks suspension of the rules and pass of docket number 0653. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 0653 has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number 0654?
Docket number 0654, Counsel Fernandez Anderson offer the following: Resolution recognizing Ernestina Titina Silla as in her role as a pioneering leader in the struggle for independence in Guinea-Bissau.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you, Mr. Clerk, for giving your best effort there. Titina Silla, her name is Ernestina Titina Silla, was a fearless spirit and unwavering commitment to liberation and gender equality in Guinea-Bissau. Ignited, really, fire within all of us. I bring her today to the council to honor her because she is one of those women who was a leader within her own right, and really in the North Front during the Guinea-Bissau War against Portugal for independence, echoes throughout history embodying the relentless pursuit of justice and empowerment for both Guinea-Bissau and Cabo Verde. Titina's legacy transcends her military prowess. She championed the rights of women within the PAIGC blazing generations to follow. Despite the tragedy of her untimely passing, Titina's memory, or not passing, but being assassinated, Titina's memory burns brightly, igniting the hearts of all who hear her story and inspiring them to fight for a better tomorrow. With fervent admiration and deep respect for all that she did for Cape Verde and Guinea-Bissau, I'm asking here today that we honor her, her extraordinary legacy as a beacon of hope and courage for the struggle of freedom and gender equality for all women across the world. She is one of my favorites, as you know, next to Auntie Harriet, but is not often recognized and I don't think often gets the flowers as she deserves. Asking for suspension and pass here. Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Thank you for recognizing this for her mother, for the work that she did in Guinea-Bissau and literally around the continent. Would anyone else like to speak on this matter? Would anyone else like to add their name? Mr. Clerk, please add Counselors Braden, Coletta, Durkin, Fitzgerald, Mejia, Murphy, Peppin, Santana, Weber, Worrell. Please add the chair. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, suspension of the rules and adoption of docket number 0654. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. Docket number 0654 has been adopted. We are now moving on to personnel orders. Mr. Clerk, would you please read the personnel, would you please read the personnel order?
Docket number 0655, Counsel Louie Jen for Counsel Murphy, personnel order.
The Chair moves to passage of docket number 0655. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The personnel order has passed. We are now moving on to green sheets. Is anyone looking to pull anything from the green sheets? The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Hi, I'd like to pull 0534 from the green sheets. This is the appointment that I talked about earlier for the Bay Village Historic District Commission, Sanam Kumehia. Kumehia, sorry.
What's the docket number one more time?
0534. And this is someone that we just appointed to the Landmarks Commission, so now they're eligible for the Bay Village Historic District Commission.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, will you read it into the record?
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0534. Message in order for the confirmation of the appointment of Sanam Kumehia as a member of the Bay Village Historic District Commission for a term expiring June 30th, 2025.
Thank you.
I have another green sheet.
Absent objection, that matter is properly before the body. Would you like to pull another matter from the green sheets?
Yes, but I think we need to vote on this one first.
Okay. Yeah, it's better if we do that. Okay. So Counselor Durkin, are you seeking for passage of docket number 06? 0634?
Yes.
0534.
Okay, 05 of docket, okay. Counselor Durkin, the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation is seeking passage of docket 0534. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. This docket has passed.
It's confirmed.
Oh, this docket has been confirmed. Counselor Durkin, you have the floor.
Okay, I'm looking, sorry. Oh, I'd like to pull 0505.
0505. Docket number 0505. Mr. Clerk, would you please read docket number? If you need a minute to get it, I understand. But once you have it, if you could read docket number 0505 into the record.
From the Committee on Planning, Development, and Transportation, docket number 0505. Message in order for your approval. In order approving the receipt of a preservation restriction on the Fowler Clark Farm, 487 Norfolk Street, Boston, Mass. 02126. The Fowler Clark Farm has historic significance to the city, and the owner, Fowler Clark LLC, has conveyed a historic preservation restriction on the exterior features of the buildings and site to Historic Boston Incorporated, a local charitable corporation.
Thank you. Just to clarify, with those who have their, my colleagues who have their lights on, if you could just signal, is it on this docket or is it on another matter? It's on another matter. Thank you. Okay. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. This docket is very important to the preservation community, and I'm really excited to, that it is now properly before the body. I'd like to yield to the District City Counselor Enrique Peppin to speak to this.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Peppin. Counsel Peppin, you have the floor.
Thank you, Counselor Durkin, and thank you, Madam President. This is very important to my district. It is a great, it's a great point specifically for Mattapan, because to approve the designation of preservation restriction on the Fowler Clark Farm on Norfolk Street in Mattapan is a great opportunity to make history here. This farm is the epitome of urban farming, teaching local residents the beauty of farming, but also serving as a community gathering space exemplifying its rich history. The Fowler Clark Farm was built in the year 1786. It is older than 200 years old. And this is a very rare piece of land that you cannot find in many other parts of this city. So I'm asking my colleagues to please vote in favor of preserving this rich history in the heart of Mattapan.
Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel Peppin. As the Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation, I urge my colleagues to approve this docket 0505 today. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The Chair of Planning, Development, and Transportation seeks passage of docket number 0505. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0505 has been confirmed.
Has passed.
Has passed. Thank you. The Chair recognizes Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Can we pull docket 0343?
Of what committee?
034.
Of what, from what committee?
Oh, sorry, Arts and Culture.
From Arts and Culture. We'll give the clerk a minute. It's docket 0303, Madam Chair?
Yes.
0303.
Thank you.
0343? 0343.
0343. Okay.
You have it on the green sheets?
Yes.
Docket number 0343.
Yep.
Just want to confirm, everyone has it before them. Docket number 0343. Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you please read it into the record?
From the Committee on Arts, Culture, Entertainment, Tourism, and Special Events, docket number 0343. Message in order authorizing the city of Boston to accept and expend the amount of $325,000 in the form of a grant for the Red Sox Arts and Parks Program, awarded by the Boston Red Sox, to be administered by the Mayor's Office. The grant will support arts programming, community events, and parks operations across Boston.
Thank you. Absent objection, the motion of the committee chair is accepted and the docket is properly before the body. Counsel Fernandez Anderson, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. As a Chair of the Arts and Culture Committee, I'd like to, for my colleagues today, are asking for passage of this docket. The community in Fenway needs this grant as soon as possible, emphasizing the need through examination of its allocation and proposing that it receives suspension and pass today, as I, as mentioned. This approach ensures that resources are distributed equitably and that critical funding decisions are made within careful consideration of their potential impact to the most vulnerable members of this community. So, asking for my colleagues to suspend and pass to get this funding allocated as soon as possible.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. Counselor, the Chair recognizes Counsel Durkin. Counsel Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much, Counsel Fernandez Anderson, for pushing for us to take this forward today. Despite the global recognition of the Red Sox team, our hometown team still has the greatest impact here in Boston. And this, this grant money is specifically for Arts and Culture, which I think is incredible to ensure that the neighbors around the ballpark sustain all the other elements of a thriving community, like access, and these, sorry, like opportunities for community connections and basically, basic quality of life conditions. With the expansion of ballpark programming to a minimum of 12 concerts each year, it is important that the Red Sox remain a good neighbor by, among other things, providing these ongoing grants. I'm so happy to work with the Fenway community, with Counsel Tanya Fernandez Anderson, and the Mayor's Office to understand the best uses of these funds, and I hope my colleagues will support this necessary annual grant from the Red Sox. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Counsel Fernandez Anderson. The Chair of Arts Committee seeks suspension, seeks for passage of docket number 0343. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Docket number 0343 has passed. Is anyone else looking to pull anything from the green sheets? We are now moving on to late files. I have been informed by the clerk that there are two late file matters. No consent agenda? Okay. Two personnel orders and four consent agendas. We will take a vote to add these matters to the agenda. All those in favor of adding the late file matter say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Thank you. The late file matters have been added. The late file matters have been added to the agenda. Mr. Clerk, please read the first late file matter into the record.
First late file matter, personnel order for Council Louis Jen for Council Durkin.
The chair moves for passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. The personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the record.
Second late filed matter for Council Louis Jen for Council Durkin, personnel order.
The chair moves for passage of this late file matter. All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. Thank you. The ayes have it. This personnel order has been adopted. Mr. Clerk, please read the next late file matter into the record.
There are four consent agenda matters as late files.
All those in favor say aye. All opposed say nay. These late file consent agenda items have been adopted. We are now moving on to the consent agenda. Oh, we are now moving on to the consent agenda. I've been informed by the clerk that there are four additions to the consent agenda in addition to the ones that we have just adopted. The question now comes on approval of the various matters contained within the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. The consent agenda has been adopted. We are now on to announcements. Please remember, these are for upcoming dates and events, and if you have any events that you would like to announce, please do so here. If there's anyone that you would like to honor, we'll do that in the memoriam section. I would like to honor and say a happy birthday to Larry Poston, the father of my Chief of Staff. This Friday, we will have the Greek flag raising. We will see our very own clerk there helping us to raise the flag. That will be at 11:30 at City Hall Plaza, and then the parade, the Greek parade is on Sunday, Mr. Clerk, starting at noon?
At what?
At 1:00, beginning?
At Boylston Street near the public library.
At the Boylston Street near the public library. So we, everyone is invited, please attend. There will also be a parade this Saturday, beginning at 2:30 at the Boston Common for our championship winners. That includes Charlestown, that includes New Mission, that includes Cathedral, that includes Boston Latin School, for our basketball teams and our hockey teams. So come one, come all. And I know next Wednesday, we'll also be honoring some or all of our teams as well. If anyone would like to make an announcement, Council Durkin, you have the floor.
Thank you so much. It's with great excitement. I am working with Sitco in partnership with five local nonprofit organizations, the Stepping Strong Center, the Kenmore Business Association, and we are announcing today a One Mile to Go Block Party, which will be hosted on Beacon Street on Marathon Monday, right in front of Cornwalls. The public is invited to attend this first-ever party for the people in, to honor the spirit of the marathon at a key milestone, the final mile, along the marathon route in Kenmore Square. Again, this is Marathon Monday, April 15, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The first-ever block party will include a pop-up beer garden, a family zone, lawn games, DJ Tony Clark from Big Night Live will be there, and for the first time ever, you'll be able to watch from bleacher seating, other than the marathon finish line. There will be a new location for Marathon Monday, and there will be a jump-tron of the marathon finish line. Spectators coming from Hotel Commonwealth and the Red Sox game can access the block party on Beacon Street through the tunnel gap within Kenmore Square Green Street Line Stations, and very soon, all elected officials who represent the Fenway will receive an email from me, my office, and Sitco inviting you to take part in a special way in this historic and really exciting day. So, really excited. Thank you to my colleagues. I'm hoping to see some of you there, and it's just going to be a really exciting moment for the city, and I hope we'll all take part. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkin. I'd also love if you send that information around so that we have it, that would be great, or we can send it. You can talk to my office, and we'll make sure that everyone gets it out, gets that information. Council Weber, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Just quickly, this Saturday is the Parkway Little League opening day and parade in West Roxbury. It's a big event. If you need more information, you can go to parkwaylittleleague.org. I hope to see some of my colleagues there. Also, on Friday, at the Drawdown Brewery in Eggleston Square, it's a women-owned business that has a focus on women's sports, and Friday night, I think, is the final four of the Women's NCAA Tournament. As a proud graduate of University of Iowa Law School, you know, I'm going to be rooting for Caitlin Clark and the Hawkeyes, and I will be there for the final, which I think is on Monday. Also, just, I know it already passed, but yesterday I got to spend, happy birthday to Alice Gillis at the German Center. She turned 106. So, thank you very much.
Amazing. Thank you, Council Weber. We love Drawdown, and so hopefully we'll be there with you. Did you have a start time for the Parkway Little League? Is that at noon? I believe it's at, I believe it's at noon, but.
Yeah, I think it's 11 to noon. I don't know, we're working on that.
Okay. Thank you, Council Weber. Anyone else have any announcements? Okay, we are now moving on to memorials. The chair recognizes Councilor Braden. Councilor Braden, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. I rise to remember John Moran, who's the father of Majority Leader Michael Moran, and I wish to extend our condolences to Michael and all of his family. John Moran was a stalwart and very proud father and an immigrant from Ireland, and he was able to get back home to the old country last, this last year, and it's been a great, great pleasure to be able to go home. So we would just extend our sympathies to the Moran family.
Thank you, Council Braden. The chair recognizes Council Coletta. Council Coletta, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam President. Today, we are adjourning in memoriam of somebody whose identity has not been disclosed quite yet, who lost their life in a Sitco wildfire yesterday in East Boston. I just want to send out my deepest condolences and sympathies to that family and the family of a girl who is still in critical condition right now. I don't live too far away from there, and so I heard the multiple sirens go past, and I was there at 5:30 in the morning witnessing the heroism of our first responders, and just want to thank them for everything they do and seeing yesterday, them literally saving this girl's life. I just felt like I wanted to call that out on the floor and just thank them personally. Of course, please keep everybody in your prayers. There were 30 people that were also displaced, and, you know, in moments of darkness, there is always light. The East Boston community has come together to support these families. We've created a link through the East Boston Social Center, which is a trusted organization, a 501(c)(3) to help these families get on their feet, and I also want to thank Bono, who helped cater lunch yesterday. It's a restaurant in East Boston, think a local hotel that I won't name just for the privacy of folks, for giving these families a block so that they could stay in East Boston. Modaro, Senator Edwards, the East Boston Social Center, East Boston Mutual Aid, and just please consider sharing this link and letting folks know about it so that we can continue to help these families, and please keep the two families affected by the loss and the individual in critical condition, please keep them in your prayers. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Coletta, and thank you for uplifting the family and the life that was lost, and for your work on this. The chair recognizes Council Durkin. You have the floor.
Thank you, Council President. Larry Lucchino passed away, the former president and CEO of the Boston Red Sox, yesterday from cancer at 78. He had survived three previous cancer scares and was the president, was the chairman of the Jimmy Fund, the charitable philanthropy org that does so much in our city for Dana Farber. His commitment to philanthropy was unparalleled, and I thought I would read three quotes from some people who knew him. May he rest in peace. This is from John Henry. Larry's career unfolded like a playbook of triumphs marked by transformative moments that reshaped baseball and ballpark design, enhanced the fan experience, engineered the ideal conditions for championships wherever his path led him, and especially in Boston. Yet perhaps his most enduring legacy lies in the remarkable people he helped assemble at the Boston Red Sox, all of whom are a testament to his training, wisdom, and mentorship. And this is from Larry Lucchino's family. To us, Larry was an exceptional person who combined a Hall of Fame life as a major league baseball executive with his passion for helping those most in need. He brought the same passion, tenacity, and probing intelligence to all of his endeavors, and his achievements speak for themselves. And lastly, from Sam Kennedy, the CEO and president of the Red Sox, there are so many of us who have been given a start in baseball by Larry. He instilled in us and so many others a work ethic, passion, competitive fire that we will forever carry. His legacy is one that all of us were taught by him feel a deep responsibility to uphold. Not only did he bring Boston three championship rings, every single city he visited had that same success, and may, to the Red Sox family, may he rest in peace, and on behalf of the Boston City Council, our condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Durkin. The chair recognizes Councilor Flynn. You have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to express my condolences to my good friend from South Boston, Bernie Corbett, who was a member and longtime leader in the Commons Union, the MBTA Union. He passed away. He was also a proud father. He was also a proud Marine, active in South Boston youth sports, including South Boston youth hockey. He was my neighbor in South Boston, a wonderful man, a wonderful father. He contributed greatly to our community and to our country, and he will be missed. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Council Flynn. Today, we will adjourn our meeting in memory of the following individuals. On behalf of Council Braden and the entire Boston City Council, John Moran, father of leader and representative Mike Moran. On behalf of Council Coletta, East Boston Fire Victim and the entire Boston City Council. On behalf of Council Louis Jen and the entire Boston City Council, Congressman William Delahunt. On behalf of Councilors Durkin and the entire Boston City Council, Larry Lucchino, former president of the Red Sox. On behalf of Council Coletta, Council Louis Jen and the entire Boston City Council, John Dennis O'Brien, who was the dedicated and steadfast father and vociferous newspaper reader himself, the father of Tom O'Brien. And on behalf of Council Louis Jen, Dr. Jean Perez Nazaire. A moment of silence, please. The chair moves that when the council adjourn today, it does so in memory of the aforementioned individuals. The council is scheduled to meet again in the Ayinella Chamber on Wednesday, April 10, 2024, at 12:00. Thank you to my colleagues, central staff, the clerk, and the clerk's office, the council stenographer, Ida. All in favor of adjournment, please say aye. The council is adjourned.